All right, thank you all for being here. I noticed that there is a Scrivener's Error on the agenda. It says we're calling an order at 5:00 PM. I'm not going to make anyone wait till 5:00. We're just going to go ahead and get rolling now at 9:00. We're going to start out with Item B, A Moment of Silence. Commissioner Smith?
Please stand.
...... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion for the December 17th minutes? All right, have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're going to move right on into E, Resolutions, Awards and Presentations. Space Florida, we have one card from Frank DiBello, and I believe we have a presentation as well. Mr. DiBello?
Thank you, Commissioners. Ah, got you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, first of all, for the opportunity to present to you today. And more importantly, thank you for the support that you give to the economic development initiatives that have helped us build an industry in Florida that has been vital to our economic well-being. By every standard that we measure, Florida is doing well in the space industry. And the industry itself grew to $414 billion globally last year with over 76% of that revenue being from commercial sources. That's an 8% growth over a year that was astounding. Florida also, though, whether we measure launches or whether we measure industry growth, has done extremely well in that we've been able to attract companies like CAE, Blue Origin, Virgin Galactic. Virgin Orbit is one of those in the future. We've had SpaceX and others that are doing extremely well. Boeing moved its headquarters, its space headquarters, to the county last year, and that doesn't even count the growth that we're looking at with Lockheed Martin and the growth of their fleet ballistic missile work. So, again, by every standard, we're doing well. Last year was also a good year. We were on our path to become the most active spaceport, targeting 23 launches. A few anomalies at the end of the year took a soft track, and we wound up with 18, and Baikonur in Russia became the most active spaceport, with China, 12 from its Sichang spaceport. But what's significant is that China, last year, led the world in total launches at 34. That's the second year in a row, because the year prior, they were 38. The United States was 27 last year. Industry-wide, there were 102 orbital launches, launching some 400 satellites last year. So it's a very robust industry. And what is significant is the internationalization of this industry, with even the smallest countries looking at some kind of space participation. I thought I might take a few minutes and just go back and look at where we've come from to set the stage for where we expect to go in this next decade. I think you all remember that we were beginning the decade with the retirement of the Shuttle in July of 2011. What few people realize that just prior to that, SpaceX had its first launch, and that was after three failures to get a vehicle launched. We had had Constellation canceled, so the space industry outlook at that point in time was pretty dismal. We were looking at layoffs and a whole lot of other things associated with the economic times. Who would have realized that only four years later, we would see SpaceX not only have several dozen successful launches, but land its first vehicle in 2015, and then in 2018, land two of its rockets from a Falcon Heavy, and in 2019, land all three of its cores from a Falcon Heavy. We also saw in the last decade the beginning of new space with a number of smaller launch companies coming into the marketplace, many of them choosing Florida as their launch site. The workhorse of our launch arsenal were clearly the ULA Atlas and Delta rockets, and SpaceX with its Falcon 9 and Falcon Heavy. They brought about collectively a revolution in launch capability through the introduction of the use of reusability. The concept of reusability has changed the name of the game for launch. Similarly, in the satellite world, we've come from large exquisite satellites, some of them as large as a bedroom or a living room, and taking two and three years to develop to small sats, nanosats and cubesats. And we have now six major companies in Florida that are building satellites, also a revolution in what we've been able to pack into increasingly more capable, smaller devices. Planetary science also reached new heights in every respect. Curiosity on the left landed on Mars and gave us evidence that there was, at one time, life supported on Mars. Voyagers 1 and 2 left the solar system during this decade and gave us good insights into what's out there beyond our solar system. We also saw New New Horizon fly by Pluto and from an altitude of about 7,000 miles, give us bold new pictures of a planet that we did not have much insight into before. Gravitational waves were discovered, and we had two countries land vehicles on asteroids, one of which is already bringing back samples. That's Japan's Hayabusa, and we should have, again, success from those kinds of ventures. The big news, though, was India's Chandaran satellite, which flew around the moon and discovered water ice. That's the picture on the left, which renewed interest in the moon as a destination and a staging point, as well as a place to do other kinds of research. The significant event last year, or last decade, was also China landing a vehicle on the dark side of the moon, which is still operational. That was in the beginning of 2019. And there walking around or driving around, planning sensors, much the way that we planted flags in the West when we colonized it and went out there for land grants. So it's a changed world. There's a clear resurgence of interest in the moon. So no matter how you look at the last decade, all of those items that I mentioned point toward a decade of technology leveling among nations and a real internationalization of space activity, that even the smallest countries are looking to invest in space technology because it raises the level of their people. So from that, we wind up pretty optimistic about what's coming for the next decade. In addition to what ULA and SpaceX have been doing as the workhorse of the past decade, we see three new rockets coming to this region. ULA will be introducing its Vulcan rocket. Blue Origin should begin to fly in the 2002-2003 timeframe with their New Glenn vehicle. And Northrop Brumming is building a major new Omega rocket, which will be operating out of the Cape. We also should see an emergence of a lot of activity with small launch vehicles, whether that's Firefly, or Relativity, or others that we are working to attract. Space Florida is investing in launch complexes to support both the large and small rockets. We're taking Launch Complex 20 and building that into a, while it was a historic launch pad, we're making three small launch vehicle pads out of that. The big news for the next decade is the return of manned spaceflight. The two pictures you see up on the left are Boeing and SpaceX, which in the beginning of this year, May for SpaceX and Boeing to follow some months after, will be returning U.S. astronauts from U.S. soil to the International Space Station, breaking the dependence that we've had to have on the Russians. But up on the two pictures on the lower, on the upper right, we should see Virgin Galactic, within months, begin human spaceflight, initially out of Colorado, and eventually in other destinations. And we're certainly working to have one of those here, and there are a lot of, we get good vibes about all of that. Sierra Nevada down on the lower left is going to begin its flights in 2013, and the two vehicles on the lower right are SpaceX and their starship, which should be flying by mid-decade. Initial flights in 2013 throughout. This doesn't even count what Blue Origin and SpaceX and Boeing may be doing with commercial flights for citizens, not astronauts. So we expect a significant era, a significant decade of human spaceflight, both professional astronauts as well as citizen astronauts, for a variety of reasons, with companies going out to Pandora Earth orbit to do work, do research, and also for adventure, space. That'll have an impact on our region. There is no reason why we should expect that people coming to Florida to fly will be going onto the spaceport to check their BAHEX check-in or get qualified. So we're going to have to build infrastructure, and it'll have an impact on our surrounding region in terms of the infrastructure we need. NASA has its own plans to return to the moon, and both Lockheed and Boeing are vitally involved in the Orion spacecraft, and Space Launch System should be flying by 2024, 2025. Next-gen hardware is another area of target for Florida. We expect that as this launch capability becomes robust, and it is already, and we are looking at destinations, whether that be on the lunar surface or in between the Earth and the moon, there'll be a variety of destination hardware, robotic devices that can do work, land on the lunar surface, or go to other destinations in low-Earth orbit to either support research, or to fix satellites, or to repair satellites, or to provide a variety of services on orbit. What that points to is a decade of democratized space with more and more commercial companies forming the background. Even if NASA goes to the moon, I think we're going to see commercial companies go along with them to provide the logistic support, much the way our commercial companies supported our government as it went west. And we will certainly see that as we watch the emergence of a cis-lunar economy. Cis-lunar is everything between the Earth and the moon and surrounding it. Wilbur Ross, Secretary of Commerce, predicts in this next decade the emergence of a cis-lunar economy that will be up to $1 trillion by the end of the decade. We're looking to get ready for that. We've been investing in what you see at the top of the chart, in the transportation and space access, the satellite systems and ground support. But we're also targeting the myriad of companies in red that are going to be doing work with all those satellites. Some 12,000 satellites are expected to be deployed, many of them from Florida, over this next decade. So we're hoping to attract a variety of what I call the high-value-added businesses that are working with telecommunications, data, global connectivity, and all of the Earth observation, and other services to help make our life through information products better here on Earth. We are looking at the dawn of a new era of on-orbit lunar research. As capability becomes robust, we're going to see companies and researchers going up into low-Earth orbit to do research, to do some manufacturing, but basically to create value. And we want that value brought back to Florida or launched from Florida. And we see ourselves as a global trade port. That is what we want this region to be. And when I talk about the region, I'm talking about the area between Daytona and Orlando and Melbourne as a major region. We are also investing heavily in spaceport infrastructure to allow what was underutilized or excess infrastructure from a federal era, predominantly federal era, to be utilized for commercial companies. And a lot of this rush, as I mentioned, over 76% of the marketplace today is from commercial sources. Finally, we see ourselves as the global leader in enabling commercial space. That's the target that we're setting our mind on. We have strategies for industry growth, for industry leadership and positioning, both in federal policy areas as well as what we need to do with our infrastructure, as well as to provide spaceport leadership in new governance and the kinds of facilities and infrastructure that the industry needs. Over the past decade, we have a portfolio of items that we've financed or taken charge of that's roughly $2 billion in portfolio value. By the end of the decade, we've set a target to do $10 billion as that number. So we're really working to build the industry in this region and in the state. And our target is to create what I call a major space trade port out of this area and to be the principal state enabler of this cis-lunar economy as it evolves. I'm going to spend just a few minutes, and I asked my colleague Jim Kuzma, who'll also fill in on this part of it. But I think you all know that the Indian River Bridge is one that has reached the end of its useful life, and in fact, there were four or five years of attempts to get an all-federal solution to that. We were able to pull together a team to seek an INFRA grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. We were successful in that effort. And Jim Kuzma led our effort, both with the INFRA grant, as well as we'll be building the replacement for the Indian River Bridge. Jim, if you'll give us an update on the bridge.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Senator.
Chairman, I think there is a card for me, too, up there. So I am Jim Kuzma, Space Florida's general manager of the spaceport. And that team that Frank was talking about includes both Central Office and District 5, our own Space Coast Transportation Planning Office, and both NASA Headquarters and NASA KSC. So the project itself actually has two components. One is the replacement of the bridge, and the second one is the actual widening of Space Commerce Way to four lanes, which it was originally designed for. And in that, it'll also include some work on the NASA Parkway West. So I wanted to give you a little information. I'll make sure there's some fact sheets. But first off, that team was very important. You had to meet all these different wickets on the left side to get on all the different things to do that. So we're very excited for that. Obviously, we look at it, what Frank was talking about, we have to build infrastructure to come into the spaceport for the world. So we look at this as if this will be for the next 45, 50, 60, 70 years. Our fundamental tenets going into this was that we were not going to put the cost of the bridge on the residents of Brevard County, right, on the residents of Florida. We were not going to impact the Florida, the work program in the state, or the local priorities of the Space Coast Transportation Plan Office. And the other thing was to maintain the territorial boundaries of both Kennedy Space Center and Cape Canaveral Air Force Station. Mainly because of growth, we're not going to understand what safety issues, hazards issues are going to be. So whatever we do, because there will be land transfer to do that, to do that. But those five priorities will be based this on, and that led us to looking at ways to basically finance the bridge, right, using our tools that Frank discussed a little earlier. The grant itself is for 100, the bridge itself is for $165 million. It's a project. We did a lot of work during the stand-down. March 4th was when we submitted it. And if you remember, the stand-down started on December 21st and ended in February. So it was a very, very interesting discussion to get there. We got the goal. The rules were that the federal government, U.S. DOT, could fund up to 60% of the grant, other federal funds up to 20, and the local match, or Space Florida's match, had to be at least 20% and responsible for any cost overruns. And so right now, that sits at 42. We had asked for $99 million. We received 90. We had to guarantee that we would take not only the project, but maintain it for the life of the project. And so there's two separate components to do that, and I think we'll talk a little bit about those right here. So the Indian River Bridge, the PD&E that was going on was actually funded, has been funded through NASA, through federal highways, and the land folks. That will, the PD&E will end up here in first quarter in March, right? The design phase is already kicked off. It'll be about a year before that, so that'll be done in first quarter of '21, right? And then construction will start shortly after that. The southern span is going to be put up first. The first thing that will happen will be, there'll be some movement of utilities on the south. KSC is doing that ahead of the project. And then the southern span will be built. There's, one of the rule sets is that there has to be four lanes of traffic throughout all of the construction, so that southern span will be a little wider. We'll have to keep traffic down to about 35 miles an hour to bring all four lanes of traffic across that. We're actually excited about that, because that means that bridge is going to be a little, maybe a little stronger, a little wider for payloads and other material for the future. So we think that fits very well into the growth strategy. That will be done by the Department of Transportation for the actual construction. We expect that first span to be 12 to 15 months, right? And then there'll be, the original spans will be simultaneously demolished, and then the northern span will be put up. And as you see there, the question marks are just an issue. It's going to move a little bit, but we feel very comfortable with that. Space Commerce Way was not part of any of the original failures. This is just looking at 1,000 to 2,000 people in that area, right? The entranceway to the visitor centers in there now, and we have to move some pretty large loads through there. So we're going back to the original design. That will be Space Florida's responsibility. KSC is helping us with all the NEPA discussions for all the work that's been done. And we're working on that final, to get the design redone. And we should start about the same time in construction and complete it. And then the next part was to connect the Parkway West and those two pieces, and those will be done kind of in the later portion to not impact. So I know that was very fast. I apologize. I owe Frank and Matt some discussions, but we're very excited that it's moving along. But there are two distinct projects, so the Space Commerce Way will not impact the bridge at all, right? And that'll all be done in that way. One of the things that we had to agree to was that we would be responsible for all the maintenance for the long term. Build assets, not liabilities. So that's part of what we're looking at for the future, to keep that going. And we obviously may not do that. We'll contract it out, most likely back to Department of Transportation, but we will be responsible for providing the funds to do that. And that's really about it. So I'm available, I know Frank. I don't know if there's any questions, but...
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kuzma, I'm sorry. The INFRA grant, where did that money come from?
That money comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Federal money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do me a favor, look at everyone behind you. Everyone behind you are taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
So your goal was the Brevard County not burdened. I want you to remember, when you write grants, these are the people that pay for those grants out there. So you better believe that the taxpayers of Brevard County paid for this. Now, they may not have paid a disproportionate share, but the taxpayers in Brevard County are very important. So when you say that we're not burdened, please remember that that's
Yes, sir.
where taxes come from.
Commissioner Pritchett? Let me get you on here.
Yep, I'm on now. Mr. Kuzma, Mr. DiBello, I just can't thank you enough for all that you guys have done in our community and helping with the bridge project, but there's so much more. I remember the dark days that we got through as a community and how tough it was. And it was men like you, leadership like you guys, and women coming along to help bring us back around into the space center that we are. I would love to change the name of us to the Space Center of the World. I would. I would love that to be our new motto, but I just can't thank you enough for it. I mean, we lived through those tough times, and I can't thank you enough for all the help with the bridge. This is something we were beating our heads with about six years ago, because if we can't get that bridge up, it's going to hinder space. And it's fun and wonderful with all the commercial stuff, but talk about security as a nation, space is so important, and if we're not keeping up with these things, we're in trouble as a nation. So I just want to thank you so much. And my favorite thing that I'd love to say about us is we build rockets. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming out. Mr. DiBello, I'll tell you, probably the nicest thing that I heard from you, or at least the one that warms my heart the most, is when you referred to Pluto as a planet still. It's always been a planet in my heart, and it'll always remain that way. And then apart from that, you know, it's great that we're going to be able to have people routinely launched out of the U.S., whether it's Brevard County or elsewhere, I think is secondary to the fact that it's coming out of this country, instead of sending Americans out of Kazakhstan. So thank you all so much for coming out. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what both of you have said, because if it wasn't for gentlemen like you and people with foresight like Linda Weatherman and people in our government that have pushed, there would not be a Blue Origin. So we wouldn't be building rockets here. And I point that out to people all the time, that of the thousands of rockets that we've launched in this, from this county over the last 50 years, not one has ever been built here. And now with Blue Origin, we're going to have our own rocket plant. So we're going to build rockets, and we're going to send them out into space. And that's a big deal. And OneWeb and all the other companies that are coming here to do business, that's because of the dynamics of you and your team, and the people you've been able to get onboard, and with, literally, the sky is the limit. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much. All right, we're going to move on to Item E as an echo two, which is the resolution renaming Mobile Ave to Melvin Chapman Way. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the church group from the Reverend Melvin Chapman. Would you all come on forward? I'm going to read this resolution, and then if you guys want to say a few things, we would love to hear from you. Would you all like to come up? Welcome. Whereas Reverend Melvin Chapman, pastor of Parker Memorial Baptist Church of Cocoa for 24 years, passed away on July the 4th, 2015. Whereas Parker Memorial Baptist Church of Cocoa further desires, further desires a fitting memorial to be established to pay honor and tribute to Reverend Melvin Chapman, a pastor of noble humility, dignity and sacrifice to the church and West Cocoa community. And whereas, under Reverend Chapman's leadership, a house of hope was established, a new sanctuary and a fellowship hall were built. And whereas Reverend Chapman was actively involved in city council, community meetings, and was the president of the Central Brevard Ministerial Coalition and co-founder of the Fourth Sunday Brotherhood of Churches, a Christian fellowship and support group consisting of seven local churches. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard has been requested to rename Mobile Avenue, renaming this road right-of-way to Melvin Chapman Way. Whereas, the applicant has satisfied all applicable criteria set forth in Section 22-313 Code of Ordinances of Brevard County. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida declares Mobile Avenue Road Right-of-Way to be officially named Melvin Chapman Way, a memorial of Mr. Chapman, and that the resolution should be recorded in the official records book in the office of the Clerk of Courts, and a copy, the same be forwarded to the post office serving that area, supervisors of elections and all concerned public safety agencies for their information. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, you beat me to it. You seconded. All right, a second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all so much.
Good morning. My name is Linda Tisdale. I'm the church clerk for Parker Memorial Missionary Baptist Church. And the committee would really like to thank you, Ms. Rita Pritchett, along with Ms. Regina Mahaney at the 911 Addressing Building for helping us get this, have this resolution come to fruition, because you did a lot for us, and we really appreciate all of your hard efforts. And although I know you say, your office say you aren't available for Sunday at 3:00, we're hoping one of your representatives do come to our ceremony for the dedication.
Yes, ma'am. I work on Sundays. I'm going to come down and bring you a little thing.
We'll let the family go first. Anthony?
To us, he was just a dad, a husband, a grandfather. We didn't realize the impact that he had on the community. We knew that he loved Parker Memorial, and we knew that they loved him, but again, we just want to say thank you. Thank you, Parker Memorial, and thank you, community.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. All right, Commissioner, you're on a roll.
Thank you, sir. We have a group of people here, I think, for the Black History Month. If you all would come forward. Team Diversity, are you all coming up? I just want to notice, we're getting ready to do this resolution. I guess, I think all women should celebrate this, too. Have you all, there's a movie that was out a while ago called Hidden Figures. I love this movie, and I think it's interesting that Catherine Johnson was an African-American female, and to be doing this at the time period she did, I think it was just marvelous. Not only from being African-American, but being a woman at that time and being able to do what she did, I think is pretty incredible. And she died yesterday at the age of 101, and I thought she was just a wonderful person. So, I want to recommend that movie to you if you haven't seen it yet. It is my honor to read this resolution right now. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to recognize tremendous contributions of African-Americans to the history of the United States. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that over the past century, African-American life, history, and culture have become major forces in the United States and the world. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that the transformation is a result of the effort of the African-American scholars, artists, athletes, leaders, and others that diligently use their talents to change how the world views African-Americans. And whereas, the, excuse me, County Commission asks the citizens of the county to commit themselves to promote and demonstrate, excuse me, an ideal Brevard County, sorry, where all men are created equal, and justice will always prevail, and the principles of love, wisdom, and compassion toward one another. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that Harry Tyson Moore of Brevard County was a civil rights pioneer that succeeded in increasing the registration of black voters, whose beliefs in activism cost the lives of both he and his wife, Harry T. Moore and Harriet Moore. And we have a wonderful memorial up in Titusville. If you haven't gone to see that yet, you should. It is beautiful. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that on March the 7th, 1965, the Edmund Pettus Bridge became a symbol of the momentous worldwide changes taking place for the advancement of civil rights. Whereas, the Brevard County Commissioners, with Team Diversities, are in collaboration... There's a lot of four-syllable words here. You should have done better for me, Jeff. From county employees and county community members whom have diverse backgrounds and will celebrate Black History Month, will focus on African-Americans and the vote. Whereas, this group of commissioners agrees that while there is division, we must now move forth with purpose as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and honor the contribution of pioneers who help ensure the legacy of the great United States. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to make the month of February 2020 Black History Month.
Perfect. I'll second it. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'm Linda Graham, and I am a part of the wonderful diversity team that we have here in the black and white, and so I want to thank you, Commissioners, individually and collectively, for continuing to support the events that we bring before you. On March the 6th, we will have our Black History Program, as was mentioned, and I'll kind of be like Steve Harvey when he says, "We got a good one for you." We do. We will be using the theme, the national theme, which is African-Americans and the Vote. We will have a dynamic speaker. If you have not heard him, I understand he just turned 24, but you would not believe it, Jordan Chandler. He's an excellent speaker, so he will be our speaker for the event. We will be celebrating the Harry T. Moore Center, as you mentioned, Commissioner Pritchett, which is very instrumental, and was instrumental, he was, in the voting rights for African-Americans in not just the county, but abroad. We'll have vendors, we'll have food trucks, we'll have a census person representing the census, which we know is very important this year for everyone to understand the importance and to fill out the paperwork and be counted, so we will have a representative there. We will also have someone there from, I think it's, well, dealing with the opioid crisis, because that's also very important. So, we'll have a diverse group at the event. It is from 11 to 2, I'm sorry, 11 to 1 on March 6th, and we do ask the community, as well as you, to come out and support us. And we're happy today to have two of the presidents and a representative from the three NAACP chapters in Brevard County, and so I just want to ask them to introduce themselves, and if they'd like to say anything, you may. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm Clarence Whipple Jr., and I'm the president of the Central Brevard Branch of the NAACP. I would like to thank the Commission for making sure that we get noted in regards to Brevard County and the greatness that we've experienced by some of the people that actually lived in Brevard County, such as Harry T. Moore, Harry V. Moore, who lost their life for justice and equality. While it is the mission of the NAACP to ensure the economic, social diversity, and rights of all people, we are now a part of that in this day and age, and we thank the Commission for having the foresight to get onboard. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is William Gary, and I'm a representative from the North Brevard Branch of NAACP. I'm serving as first vice president, and on behalf of our branch and all our members, we want to thank you for recognizing this month as Black History Month, and encouraging and supporting the efforts of the diversity team of Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Chair.
Want to try again? We're all good together.
I'm James Minus. I'm president of South Brevard Branch, NAACP. We are so thankful that you continue to support Black History Month and the efforts of all people in the past to lead us to this future. Again, on behalf of the branch, I want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here. Good to see you.
All right, sir. Good to see you. A pleasure. Good to see you.
John, how's it going?
All right, sir. Brian, a pleasure. Good to see you.
How's it, John, how's it going?
All right, sir. Good to see you.
Here we go. One, two, and... You all set? You got yours? All right. Thank you.
someone wants to pull it, I'm going to go ahead and leave that one be. Would anyone like something pulled from consent?
No, sir, I'm good.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Please, F9 and F10.
F9 and F10. May I have a motion to approve consent, less F9 and F10?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Smith, a second for Commissioner Tabia. All in favor of approving consent, less F9 and F10? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent's passed unanimously, less F9 and F10. Let's start up with F9, if we may. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is cultural grants, and I'd first of all like to thank the Commission for taking what we had in general fund and pushing that to the TDT. However, I have three reasons why these cultural grants are probably not the best use of tax dollars. Number one, under Florida statute, these grants can only be legally legal if their events, the service, are providing them for, quote, "one of the main purposes, to attract tourists." So, I went through some of these, and many of these organizations, I don't think, do a very good job attracting tourists. Let me point out a few.
Sure.
Melbourne Main Street, for example, we've got a graphic up here. According to their numbers, not ours, they attract 7% of visitors. So, here we're trying to attract tourists, and we're attracting 93% of people that already are here. I don't know that that's the best use, and that's just not it. We've got the Cocoa Village Playhouse, which does almost twice as well, but still only garnishes 12-point, again, these are their numbers, so you would think these would be as positive as possible, 12.7% of out-of-county attendees. And the Titusville Playhouse does marginally better, again, 12%. 88% of the people that use this are Brevard County residents and are therefore not tourists. So, that's reason number one. I think that should be enough, but let's go on to reason number two. These are only the ones that are reported. We've got two or three here. Remember, the job is to bring in tourists that simply don't report the number of people that they bring in, and yet, we decided to hand money over to these folks. These are, while great organizations, if they are not showing that they bring tourists, number one, I don't think are worthy of our tax dollars. Couple of questions here, and I've worked, given Mr. Krantis these, but my idea is that we could use these for marketing dollars. Mr. Krantis, you recently overhauled this program, so the funds are used more objectively, using much more verifiable data as possible. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were these funds to be reallocated from the tourist department, general marketing budget, and your marketing experience, both with the county and in private industry, would this event, in Attachment A, such as for the dinosaur museum, or the street parties in downtown Melbourne, qualify as being the most efficient use of resources if our goals was to simply attract tourists?
Well, the core of our messaging is really beaches, space, nature, and cruising, so events have a place in our marketing, but it wouldn't be a primary.
Okay. I think that was a no, but I appreciate the detail, and I see Mr. Denninghoff laugh back there. He would have had a more eloquacious response than that. And finally, and I don't find this, you know, I took this not too seriously when it was said, because it was said, I think, offhand and in anger, but Commissioner Smith once made reference to me not believing in Jesus. So, I'd like to put, because I went through this stuff, and one of our, there we go. I want Commissioner Smith to be aware, as he votes, that we are spending tourist dollars to promote evolution. Now, I don't want you to make a decision based on religion, because there are certainly issues here, but as someone that I know is such a God-fearing individual that they're willing to say that other members don't believe in Jesus, I'll tell you what, may want to think twice before they vote for tax dollars to be spent for things that are in direct contradiction to what God may believe in. So, for those reasons, I would like to make a motion to reject legislative funding, that the events in Attachment A meet the requirements of Florida statute, and that one of the main purposes of this event is to attract tourists. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would like to take this opportunity to apologize to Commissioner Tabia for my offhanded remark several years ago.
It's okay.
And I deeply apologize. I understand where you're coming from, and I can understand a person's point of view from where you're coming from, but I would hasten to bring to you the idea of advertising. I don't remember much from my college days, but I did have one course in advertising, and I remember the prof saying, "Advertising is the hardest thing for a small businessman, particularly, to understand, because if you spend $100 on advertising and your business only goes up, say, 2%, do you really feel like that's a good return on the investment?" And he went on to describe many other things, but among them was Coca-Cola, and this is 150 years ago when I was in college, but Coca-Cola was even big then, and we know how big it is today. I don't know how many billions of dollars it does per year, but nobody, even now, and back then is what he was saying, nobody advertises more than Coca-Cola. So, why do they do that? If they stopped advertising today, their sales probably wouldn't even stop, start taking a decline for three to five years, maybe. But what he went on to say is, once that decline starts, it's extremely hard to bring it back. And since I was in college, we've seen the fall of giants, retail giants, like Sears, Kmart, and before most of your time, Woolworth. They were a five-and-dime. They were huge, but other companies came along, did more advertising, did more publicity. So, the point I'm making here is, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Tabia. You're using statistics to justify not supporting a playhouse, but I would go on to say that if you ignore promoting that playhouse, not only will you lose the out-of-town people, you will lose the local people as well. So, I think that we really need to look at the big picture, and the big picture is, anything you can do to promote any of these things that we offer here in the county is a bonus, and it's a long-term type of bonus, because it accumulates over time. So, I will not second this, and if it is seconded, I will not vote for it.
Commissioner Tabia, if you want to respond briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Smith, I screwed up. I think you were actually making the point that I was trying to make, that advertising is key, that I think these dollars should be used for advertising in a way that gets the best result. The best result is not the way that we're using it. Mr. Krantis clearly said that this was not the most efficient way to do advertising. I don't want to take away any of this money from the TDT. I think it should be just used in the best way possible. Spending money where we get 7% of people outside, Mr. Krantis has said, is probably not the best way to use those resources. So, I don't want to put them anywhere else other than to get as many people out of Brevard, from, out of Brevard County to come into Brevard County. I agree with you. Coca-Cola should advertise. You know what? I also think Brevard County, and you also missed, unfortunately, Victoria's Secret is in trouble right now, so I want to add that, you know, as an American business that is in trouble.
I wasn't aware of that.
Do you have a special expertise in that particular industry, sir?
I'm just completing the argument there with you. So, what I'm saying is, I want to spend this on advertising. I want to spend it in the best way. I think Mr. Krantis knows how to do that. I don't think the Cocoa Village Playhouse, or the Titusville Playhouse, or Melbourne Main Street are the best ways to do it. And it's not just me, it's Mr. Krantis with the expertise, not only with government, but with outside, with the private sector.
All right. Next, we're going to have Commissioner Pritchett, and then I'm going to jump in and hopefully get this moving.
Mr. Krantis, is this not an effective use of tourism tax dollars?
I think, I think events play an important role in our messaging strategy, particularly in the drive market, to try to drive that short-term visit, so we do use it that way. While it's not a primary core of our messaging, it's a part of our strategy overall.
Okay. If you would be open later to want to make some changes, you would have my attention. So, I will be waiting for your leadership on that into the future with you and your committee.
Okay, thank you. The challenge with this pot of money is that it's pretty well-defined, so I, right now, we're not able to use it in a general marketing way. It has to be used for cultural. It's the first, it's 10% of the first two pennies, so that's, it's pretty well-defined in the ordinance.
Okay. The decisions you guys bring us, they're a little bit subjective. It's like, I'm very unculture, so these types of events we're doing is probably not something I would go to, but a lot of people do, and we're looking for strategies of... go to, but a lot of people do. And when we're looking for strategies of trying to get families moving back here, that's one of the things they look for, is what kind of alts and cultures are being offered. I myself would just hang out at the ballfield. But I know everybody has different opinions on things that they do. If I was queen for the day, man, I would levy down so many changes in laws, and we'd be straightened out in a week. Just kidding. So I don't, I think I'm going to go ahead and vote for this to go through, but it opened up some thinking, and I'm always open for changes if something else is better. I don't want to burden some ideas that you would have. The goal here is, the maximum amount of tourism dollars, we can get to the area, because it certainly saves us on ad valorem taxes down the road, because those kind of people generate a lot of tax dollars, and it just takes a lot of the burden off of us. Go tourism. So whatever you need to do, sir, I'm with you.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here and throw out the conclusion, as far as my conclusion, and then I'll give you the reason behind the conclusion. I'm not going to support a motion either to approve or deny this today. A few reasons. Number one, Commissioner Isnardi, who's out with the flu, is our BOCC rep for the TDC, and I really would like to hear her input on this. With respect to what I've heard so far, with Melbourne Main Street reporting 7%, out-of-county, Cocoa Village Playhouse, I think the number is 12.7, Titusville at 12 or 12 and change. I have no problem with those percentages if the raw numbers are high enough. I don't have a problem benefiting Brevard residents in addition to driving in tourists. I just don't know what the raw numbers are, and I'd like to do a little more recon with Tourism Office with respect to that. And the other question I have is, is one of alternatives, and I think Commissioner Pritchett just touched on that to a degree. I don't know what better use we would have for the money necessarily at this point, so I'm not inclined to support either direction. So frankly, it seems like regardless of what the motion is, it's going to fail, because you're not going to get a majority. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not aware of where you were on this one. For that reason, I'd like to retract my motion, and we will hopefully pull it back at the next meeting, where Commissioner Isnardi can play a part in it.
Perfect. Commissioner Pritchett?
Just real quick, on the Cocoa Playhouse, you guys remember, we approved $150,000 to go to them a few months ago. So it's something this board had supported to give them at that time, when we're going through all that mess with the, I shouldn't say all that mess, all of the conversations we had last time with the last conflict. So I just want to remind you of that. We've already dumped a chunk of change into the Cocoa Playhouse, so.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I just want to weigh in one more time. Commissioner Tobias has raised some good issues, and I appreciate having the time to look at this in further depth. So I think it would be good to bring it up later.
All right. So seeing as how we don't have any, any motion that's currently on the floor, and seeing as there are no more requests, I'm going to go ahead and pass on this. We'll move on to F-10. And I'll just throw out there, as we address F-10, if you have similar concerns with F-10, as you did with F-9, my inclination would probably be to wait for Commissioner Isnardi to get her input, as she represents the board on the TDC. So with that, Commissioner Tobias?
Okay. So this one brings up an interesting argument, and Mr. Cranis, I think these are an even bigger waste of time. And I've got three reasons as to why, and I'm with you on this one. However, I would be more than willing to wait, but I want you to be aware of number two, and here is, here is the reason why. We fund money to some of these organizations, these for-profit, but we'll talk about that a little bit later. And then, my understanding is it's reimbursed. My argument is that these events are going to go on whether or not we spend any public resources to fund a private organization. If we punt on this, and I am more than willing to punt on this, but if we do punt on this, we will be proving, and this never happens, my second point. Because one of the events that we are going to punt on actually would take place, the one in Titusville would take place on Saturday, this Saturday, the 29th. So we would actually, we will prove that these events will go even if they're not reimbursed. We have another one that is in March the 4th. So a lot of these, we will be talking about reimbursing an event that has already happened. So I'm more than willing to wait on these, but understand the events will have already transpired, and just, just, just to be clear on those, those two events right there.
Understood. Unless someone has a motion, I'm going to go ahead and pass on F-10. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, you're saying if we pass on this, there's going to be a couple that aren't going to be able to receive funding anyway?
No, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, the event will, the way this works, and thank you, Mr. Cranis, for explaining this, the event, they get allocated a certain amount of money, they hold the event, and then we reimburse them after the event. The argument is here, the event will have already taken place. So we will then reimburse them after that the event has taken place, which proves that the event is still going to take place, whether we give them money or not. So I'm more for waiting. I'm waiting forever on these things. If you're a private business, by all means, please operate in Brevard County, yet you don't need public tax dollars. But just understand, yeah, I don't know, and if these events actually don't take place, then my argument is, is, is off the table. But I think these events still are going to take place, and I think it just strengthens the point that they don't need taxpayer money.
Mr. Cranis, what's the purpose, then, of us giving funds to these events?
So the sports grants are particularly to incentivize groups from outside of Brevard County to bring their events here, and then that generates room nights, and they actually track the room nights, and there's a true ROI to that. Yes, they will certainly go forward with the events this year, but then the question becomes, you know, it's a very competitive marketplace, there's a lot of other counties and a lot of other states that want these events. So a good example is the Cairo Games. They nearly pulled the Cairo Games last fall, but we were able to give them a grant, and they were able to continue to have that event here. So, you know, the purpose is really to keep that, that flow going, so for the next year, they'll reconsider us again. So we're constantly out there looking for these types of events, to try to bring them here, because there is a real ROI to them.
Okay, so that's kind of the midnight hour. I'm going to, just because we're so close in this, I think if we make the change, it should be next year. I think we should go ahead and vote this through, and start working on changes if they need to be made. But since we're at the 11 o'clock hour here, and it's possible that we won't be able to make the correct decision, and we'll lose some of these events next year that has a good return on investment, I'm going to make a motion to approve this one.
I agree.
Commissioner Tobias, I'll treat that as a second. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Tobias?
Listen, I will be more than willing to go through all these, because, you know, the first one's damning, the other two and three are extremely damning. This is a waste of taxpayer money. But Commissioner Lober, if you are, if you are, want to wait on this...
Let me jump in, if I may?
Yeah.
Okay. So the short answer is, since these are reimbursements, and they're not, at this point, necessary in order to have the event take place, I'd prefer to wait on it. I really, I just don't feel comfortable without having the board's rep, who is, for good reason, out, and in fact, I'm happy that she's not here, so that we don't all get infected. But I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the concerns that you've raised at this point. So it sounds like either to deny or to approve it is not going to pass, because we won't have a majority. Commissioner Smith?
Sorry. Mr. Cranis, if we do not approve these, does that affect these events this year?
Because it's a reimbursement, they would go forward with their event, but they would probably be in some financial, you know, there'd be some financial concerns for them. I don't think it would prevent them from moving forward with the event this year, but I think it certainly would affect their willingness to come back again in the future.
So it would probably influence them in a negative way, that we weren't willing to cough up this money, so we're less likely to be considered next year?
Yes, sir.
So that, it is a detriment to our, our county.
Commissioner Pritchett, please.
I believe, though, if we table this, that we can still make the decision later and reimburse them?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And let me just give us a warning. You guys, we lived through a time period that was just very tough, and we got very, very hungry for economic development, these types of events. You know, we start getting comfortable, it's dangerous to quit being hungry, because we did that in the past, and we greatly lost population, we, we lost all these types of income, and I never want to live through what we did before, and I never want to be known as the commissioner who messed up when I was in office and caused another collapse to come. So I just want to give us caution, and I know these seem like these types of events, they would, I agree with you, Mr. Tobias, they came anyways. But if they don't come again next year, we have just lost a ton of tax dollars coming into the area. So just from living through the past pain, I just want to give us something to think about. I just think we need to, we just must stay hungry in this area to stay competitive with the nation.
Well said. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you know this better than I do, Mr. Cranis, so I see that one of these here, you know, you made an illusion that these events were going elsewhere. Help me with the likelihood, I'm just picking the first one here, or the one that I have down here on the Ron Johns Beach and Board Fest. My understanding is Ron Johns is in Cocoa Beach?
Yes, sir.
What are the odds that the Ron Johns Beach and Board Fest goes to a place that doesn't have a Ron Johns facility? I mean, are we, we're going to lose it to Michigan? We're going to lose it to California? What are the odds that they go somewhere else?
Well, they do have Ron Johns in other beach towns, so it is possible they could move to one of their other locations. They're just a sponsor of the event, they're not the actual event producer.
Orlando, I know they have one in Orlando, the water's very nice in Orlando. Where, where are the other ones that, you know?
And they just opened up one in Panama City. I think they've got a couple up the East Coast as well.
That are, that are surfing, that are...
Yes, New Jersey, and they have big surfing contests up there. Beach Haven, New Jersey. And they have one on the West Coast as well.
Correct.
Tampa, or one in that area.
Yes, sir.
And the Hall of Fame, out of curiosity, that we're going to give money, where, where is that? The Surfing Hall of Fame?
Yeah, that's a surfing event, so they're, they operate up and down the East Coast, so they could pick other locations to hold their surfing event.
Where is that one headquartered?
I believe they're...
Is that one headquartered?
I think it's out of the Carolinas, I'm not sure 100%.
Oh, because when I drove by Ron Johns, that was, I've got a screenshot, if we get a chance. It was located in the Ron Johns facility itself.
Here we are, Commissioner.
That, that was one of the cultural grants, that's not a sports grant.
My point is, you know, we've got private businesses that are holding many of these for-profit businesses. I'm sorry, private and for-profit are different for-profit businesses where these are located. Anyway, I'll call Ron Johns bluff on that one all day long, that they're not going elsewhere. But with Commissioner Lober saying he'd like to wait for Commissioner Isnardi, I think my arguments would probably work more favorably on her. So with that, I will pull the motion that I was going to make.
All right, we still have a... Okay, so Commissioner Isnardi is pulling her motion. We don't have any motions on the floor at this point. We're going to move on to, let's see here, public comment. We have several in public comment, one that was specific to a separate item that's coming subsequent, the agenda's been pulled from that to be placed in the subsequent item, but otherwise, I'm going to take it in the following order here. We'll have Charles Tovey from Melbourne, then we'll have Tom Niedert from Palm Bay, Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores, and then Peter Carnisdale, Carnisale, I'm sorry, from Melbourne. So, Mr. Tovey, you're up first, sir.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road. And do you think they're going to move Daytona Beach, Daytona 500? And, no, this is where it is, and that's where, anyways, Osceola County has just opened up another phase for their homeless, and Orlando has just bought a 7-Eleven, and they got together and bought a 7-Eleven to put an environmental corner on it. And also, St. Cloud is having a big protest about their spraying the herbicides on their big lake and things, and I think we need to address this, because, and this went on my list that I hadn't had time, but DDT, it took years and years and years to find out the outcome and what it causes. Just like our advertising, we don't know what our advertising brings back unless we plant the seed. And later on down the road, as I have experienced, the advertisement will pay off, and it takes time for fruition to occur. With liberty and justice for all, this is not illegal. This is my tie I wore to code enforcement, hearing on the ousting of my property. And there's other people that have suffered the ends of this, and it's totally immovable, doesn't work, and definition, a noose has to move. This is a tie, that there's no legal or illegal way, or, no, I should be able to wear it. Satan believes in God, by the way, believes in Jesus Christ, by the way. And I am a community watchdog, and I appreciate everybody that comes out. But I especially appreciate the county and government workers that stand up for America and stand up for our county, and even though they might be subject to things by their associates, who are we putting first? Our friends and our coworkers, or our family, our government, and our country, and our county? And where's everybody, where's all our animals going to go? We have a problem with black bears, because they're being run out of, just like me and my property, I'm being run out, and just like all the other things that I hadn't had time to expound on. Sometimes being ugly, or, anyways, I can't. Sometimes being ugly is the only way people understand. You try being nice, they don't care, and it is sometimes being ugly is the only way they understand. Excuse me, I'm a weirdo, I'm different, I'm unorthodox, I'm not crazy, but I'm different. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. All right, Tom, I see you back there. You bring moral support with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? Tom Niedert, 1860 Zamander Street, Palm Bay, Florida.
Before you get started, if you have a double XL, I'll give you some cash right now.
Ah, I'm going to give you guys one, that's what I'm here for.
All right, I'll give you cash anyway, then, let me know after.
Good morning, Commissioner, how are you? My name's Tom Niedert, I'm a member of our county professional firefighters, and I'm also the event coordinator for St. Baldrix of Brevard. I'm here talking today about St. Baldrix. St. Baldrix's event, we hold every year at the Avenue of Vera. We have 300 participants this year. We are shaving our heads in consideration for children's cancer. Every year, about 300 people shave their head for this in this county, and there are, out of the events nationwide, there are 3,000 events nationwide, and we are in the top 10 of the events nationwide. We have raised, in this county alone, over $2.5 million for children's cancer. To put things in perspective, every two minutes, a child is notified that they have cancer, every two minutes. That happens every day, all day, around the world. One in five of those children will not, will not survive. I want to tell you right now that we're, our event is March 14th at the Avenue of Vera, from noon to 5:00, and it's a great event, and I want to invite you guys to come out. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Smith?
I don't have any questions, but I want to commend you guys for stepping up and doing this year after year. I don't know how many years this has been going on. I've been taking part for, ever since I was elected, even shaved my own head one year. I'm not sure I'm, I want to do that again, but I totally support what you guys do. I have a grandchild, a granddaughter, that was diagnosed with leukemia when she was 10, and she beat it, thank God. And, but things like this are the catalysts that help these families and these young kids get past those events. So keep up the good work, and God bless you.
Well, I've been the team captain for over seven years, and this year, I'm the actual event coordinator, so I'm coordinating the event. It's a great cause, and this year, we have 30 firefighters signed up to shave their heads. Brevard County Sheriff has 15 right now. So our numbers are climbing, and the event, like I said, is on March 14th. You can go to stbaldrix.org and get more information on the event.
So what do the T-shirts run?
T-shirts are $10, $20 for each T-shirt, and all the proceeds go to the event for our Brevard County Fire Rescue Team.
All right, I'm going to buy one for me, one for my wife, and then you find a third person for the third one. Fair?
Fair.
All right, come on up.
All right.
Don't get the flyer stuff.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Pritchett's getting in on this, too? As long as I don't have to dye it to fit it on, I'm happy. Thanks. And Commissioner Smith? Hey, Tom, come on back, the important part.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Thanks.
Like I said, our event's March 14th, from noon to 5:00, there's 300 people shaving their heads, it's a great time, come on out, even, you don't have to shave your head to raise money, you can just come out and have a great time. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, Sandra Sullivan?
Good morning. So, I care about a different topic. You've probably heard on social media how upset everybody is beachside about the color of the sand. It's a dark gray. I've taken a lot of pictures, you're welcome to go on Waves Action 32937, I've documented the difference in the color of the sand. I wanted to read a little section here from a newspaper article from 2003. It says, "The middle reach, a 7.6-mile stretch through Satellite Beach wasn't restored because of environmental concerns. That portion of the coast has a hard rocky bottom that has been designated by state and federal fish and wildlife agencies as an essential fish habitat." And I sent you a copy of that article. So, the question is, fast forward to now, and we're doing, that is a preserve, a large part of that area is a preserve area, it was funded by $8.5 million state funds to create a preserve to protect sea turtles. The research shows that sand re-nourishment harms the sea turtle nesting. There's also the inshore reef which is protected. The report that I saw from the Corps of Engineers, Corps of Engineers has had its share of a lot of controversies. That report shows that the coloration is on the edge of it, I think it should be third-party verified as well, some of the sand grain size is not within conformance. But the thing that also concerns me very much is that the mitigation reef, that report that came out, that was given to me by the county, is, does not fully mitigate the inshore reef, it is not mature enough. And by the Corps of Engineers' own permitting documents, it is required to fully mitigate. There, so there are numerous red flags, I'm gonna read something. Never mind that the inshore reef is protected by state law and preserve agreement, never mind that the Corps of Engineers requires a mitigation reef fully offset the real reef, never mind that they're using a 20-year-old survey of the reef to calculate the 10% they can bury, never mind the reef that they are burying protects the beach sand on the beach, so you're taking away protection, never mind the reef is important to the ecology and important nursery for fish, never mind the sand dredge is different from the sand on the beach and harms turtle nesting according to scientific studies, never mind the sand washes away and covers the hard bottom causing turbidity and other issues according to scientific studies, never mind that the sand is supposed to be the same color and not gray, never mind that the turtles have already started nesting early. We're asking that you halt this and request the DEP to get involved for verifying, to do a variance, and have a biological, a biological expert confirm that there's no harm. So, to put a temporary halt on until that can be determined. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. All right, Peter, I see in the back there. Welcome.
Pete Carnisale, 1910 Independence Avenue in Melbourne. I represent myself. Basically, there's the same thing that we've been talking about all along, which is the turn lane that's required on Vera Boulevard in order to make sure that we do not have rear-end collision, okay? And we've been talking about that over and over and over again in terms of heading east, the traffic will continue to roll, it does not, that does not make any difference whether there are 10 cars in a period of time or whether there are two cars in a period of time, it's just a matter of time before somebody not paying close enough attention is gonna rear-end the people that slow down to almost zero in order to make that turn. The, there's a couple of other items, basically, there's still, we're still looking for the golf cart crossover of I-95 because the people on the other side of I-95 can't get to the schools on the west side, okay? And we can't get to the shopping that's on the west side, which is increasing, okay? And a lot of the people that we have in the aged group basically use their golf carts because they can't basically drive the regular cars. And the third thing basically is the traffic light. Now, I realize that the traffic light is more of a more complicated item because of the fact that it requires the traffic study and it requires approvals before it can get any kind of funding from the board. However, I've been hearing from the church and from the development across the way that they believe there is a light coming. Now, I don't know where that's coming from, okay? I keep getting the answer that we have to wait for all of these things to happen before a decision can be made, but they seem to believe that it's coming without any of that stuff happening. And they believe that the wiring that's being installed, which I believe is for the lighting structure that is needed along that road, is part of the wiring that is gonna be needed for the light. I would just like you guys to look into that and see whether or not we already, is that part of it? Are we actually gonna have a light? Are we not gonna have a light? Or are we actually waiting for all of these surveys to be done? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, as to H1, I see that we have a comment card from John Shepard marked "Questions Only." My understanding, before we have staff introduce this, is that we've essentially always passed requests of these, of this nature, I think the last one dealt with the car dealership moving from my district to Commissioner Pritchett's district. With that said, I've spoken with staff about it, I think everyone's had an opportunity, whether they've spoken with them or not, so unless there's some legal requirement that we have a presentation, I'm happy to accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve H1?
Commissioner Tobias?
A second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to H2. All right, that's in my district, again, I've heard what I need to from staff, if someone wants to make a motion, I'm happy, motion approved from Commissioner Tobias, I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. H3, that's a D3 item, Commissioner Tobias, what's your pleasure?
No issues, motion approved.
All right, I'll second that one as well. All in favor of approving H3, which is a petition to vacate, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, now with respect to the J items, I know that Commissioner Isnardi probably has an interest in several of these, I don't know if anyone wants to address whether we should skip some of them, vote on all of them, or what they'd like to do, but I just, I think some of these items are serious enough, it's at least worth mentioning. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir, just because a couple of them are larger, and, not that I'm not supporting them, I think item J1, item J2, J5 and J6 should be with Commissioner Isnardi here to state an opinion with us.
All right, my, just real briefly, before we start addressing the items, I don't disagree with J1, and if Commissioner Tobias is amenable, J5 and 6, I would just suggest that, given the discussion that we had, I think it was the last or second-to-last meeting on J2, the motion that would be before the council on, or excuse me, before the commission on J2 would simply require a majority, but the follow-up would require a supermajority. From what I recall during the discussions that we had last at the BOCC, Commissioner Isnardi was in favor of it but didn't want to vote until we had Commissioner Smith here. So my thought is, if we have a simple majority today, it would resolve the issue because we'd likely have a supermajority when it comes back for amending the ordinance. So if you're amenable to it, I'd prefer that we at least talk about J2 and see where folks are at.
Yeah, I don't mind talking about it, but I wouldn't be as comfortable supporting it until she's here, because she gave the courtesy to Commissioner Smith for that conversation that we have at those times, because a lot of times we change our minds when we have conversations, or we talk ourselves into it, well, some of us, so, that's what I'm thinking, sir. Not that it might not be a great idea, I like it so far, but...
If that's your preference, if you wanna make a motion as to J1 and J2, at least at first, let's address those two, then we can address J5 and 6 with Commissioner Tobias separately.
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion to table item J1 and J2 till Commissioner Isnardi's here at the very next meeting.
At the next meeting? Okay, I'll go ahead and second, that is to J1 and J2. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm gonna vote for this, but for the deference of the people that have come out here, I imagine they may wanna count votes. I wanna thank the Soral Committee of Citizens Oversight for all their hard work, I plan to be supporting this as it comes forward, so I don't mind waiting for Commissioner Isnardi, but I wanna be pretty darn clear that I appreciate the direction that we asked them to take, they certainly followed, and will have my certainly support on that one. You know, we just need three votes, you would have my support. Basically, my understanding is the tourist development tax proceeds, you're just looking for options, which, you know, it's not requiring us to do anything, my understanding is it's not a great deal of staff time that would go into that, you're more than welcome to wait for Commissioner Isnardi if you wanna, but if you wanna take a vote on that, this, if Commissioner Isnardi had any disagreements of any changes, there would be ample time for her to do that. So I will follow your lead on that one, however, since it's just a report, I think that all information, whether you agree or disagree, is probably best when you're making determination. So, again, I'll support it, but if you wanna wait, I'm more than willing to do that as well.
Yeah, given that I've had the request from two of the commissioners up here, I'm gonna go ahead and suggest that we wait on J2, until she's available, until Commissioner Isnardi is available. So with that said, we have a motion, and we have a second, as to continuing J1 and J2 to the next regularly scheduled BOCC meeting, so all in favor of continuing those two items out to the next regularly scheduled meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. So we'll move on to, well, before we do that, I'm just thinking, the folks that came here to speak on J1, I'm certainly happy to give them the opportunity to speak now since they did come out and wait, is that all right? I know that we had the motion to continue, is that, does anyone have an objection to that?
No, sir, I just wanna state, along with Commissioner Tobias, I am supporting this also, if that helps with public opinion.
Sounds pretty positive. Okay, so I'll call up folks, if you wanna speak, you're certainly welcome to speak today, or if you wanna come back and speak the next meeting when this is actually voted on, you're welcome to do that, or both, it's really your preference, but I, just out of an abundance of respect for your time, I'd like to at least give you all the opportunity. So first up, we have MJ Waters, and we're not gonna take any votes on this, this is just for public comment.
I'll defer.
You'll defer? Okay, then we have Beau Platt?
I'll defer.
Defer. Courtney Barker? All right. John Windsor?
Wave in support.
Wave in support? All right, Vincent McDermott?
I'll defer.
Defer. Vince Lamb?
I'll defer.
Defer. Charles Tovey?
I'll accept.
All right, come on up.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. My ancestors were one of the first, if not the first pioneers of Brevard, and I am the pioneer who started everything, regardless of all the, I appreciate all the help with cleaning the lagoon. It was me that started it and continued it until this day, and there's things that you'll be appropriating money for, and what I do hasn't been revealed yet, and I'll finish up my work this year on the lagoon, and then I'll give you a complete synopsis of everything, hopefully before the summer. I did give you a piece of paper and photographs of some of my work, and this will give you some insight, if you look at it, there's the areas and the contents and things, and there's just revealing items on there. Also, I wanted, there are a radio program I listen to, and they're concerned about our county as well as the lagoon, for, for more so, the lagoon, it's their livelihood. But they suggested having sea cowboys, and maybe we could transplant some of these sea cows to lakes to where we have problems, instead of spraying the herbicides, use the, and that goes back to MIDEA, Designated Environmental Recharge Areas, to where we can locate different animals, not permanent, in some places might be good permanent. But the areas can be moved, we have this area that needs help, so we designate that as recharge area and do the recovery and everything, and then it gets all the approval of the public and whoever is in charge, and then it goes to another devastation, kinda like CRAs, but for the environment and our county. Thank you for letting me speak, and I have a lot more, but I wanna let things go for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. All right, and the last item, or, pardon me, the last comment card that we had on J1 was Reverend Ron Mayer?
He left.
He left, okay. All right, thank you all so much for that. Our next item up is J3, and again with this, I'm happy to accept the motion unless folks care to discuss it, this is on the, oh, pardon me, no, I don't wanna just accept the motion on this, no, this is kind of a bigger deal here. No, it looks like the order was switched from a prior agenda, the, one of the items, do you have the solar as J3, or do you have, okay, solar, yeah, the order is a little bit changed, so as to the solar, which was at one point F15, and then J4, but now appears to be J3, pardon me, as to the solar, I'm happy to accept the motion. All right, so this is to, a motion to extend the waiver for permitting fees for solar. Any discussion on the matter? All right, seeing... I'll go ahead and second it. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of extending the permit fees for the solar motion?
Fee exemption.
Waiver fees, pardon me, it's tongue-twisting. All right, all in favor of waiving, continuing the waiver of fees, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Okay, now moving on, the, it looks like it's J4 on the updated agenda, but was J3, the discussion regarding the letter from the Palm Bay mayor, I don't know if we can have maybe Mr. Denninghoff or Ms. Bentley discuss at least any changes that we've received, I know there was a letter that came from the city over the past 24 or 48 hours, could we get a little bit of an update as to that?
Yes, sir. We did get an email yesterday afternoon from the city manager of Palm Bay indicating certain points that they would like to have in an agreement with the city. I would just point out that those, but, that on Thursday, the 20th of February, there was a meeting in the Commissioner Tobias' office with the mayor and city manager, and deputy city manager, myself, where many things were discussed, and they were, they had indicated they would send us a letter. I would point out that the letter that we did receive yesterday is not exactly consistent with what we were expecting based on the meeting on Thursday morning, and it's also not consistent with the direction that the commission gave staff on the February 11th board meeting that we had. And so that's kind of the summary, I would also add that, to a large degree, what the letter from yesterday afternoon indicated was a desire to agree to agree in the future again, so.
All right, and then Mr. Batte, or Mr. Denninghoff, or Ms. Bentley, you know, normally this would be someone, this would be an item that I would wait until we had Commissioner Isnardi back to address, but I think that we do have some time limits with respect to what we have to do here. Do you all know, and if so, do you feel remotely comfortable addressing whether she's expressed a particular opinion as to the options that are addressed in this item?
What staff was doing is actually, in light of the fact that the chair received this on those items that are currently before the board, we were looking to see if the board wanted to confirm the direction to stay the course that we currently are on, and that basically was staff's position, we were looking for guidance from the board in that regard. The reason that it's important, as you mentioned, is because the city of Palm Bay is, has continued concerns over the completion of that particular road project and moving that forward, and we're trying to be as helpful as we can be with the understanding that we're trying to make sure that we protect the county's interests to the best degree that they can be protected.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know Commissioner Nardi was really fired up on this issue, and I don't... I appreciated her passion on this. I just don't think I understood it until a meeting that I had this past week. First of all, I wanna be extremely clear with the board that I was not, nor would I ever negotiate with a city, an entity, on behalf of a board. The request was made from the city, and I certainly did not want to hinder any type of open communication. So let me... John, Mr. Denninghoff put that very nicely. First of all, let me tell you what happened here. I purposely asked Mr. Denninghoff to show up a little bit late, which he thought he showed up on time, but the city was already there. They'd given me a negotiate... What they thought was a fair negotiated set of plans for an inter-local agreement. And as soon as John Wa... As soon as Mr. Denninghoff walked in, they said, "Mr. Denninghoff, please don't even look at that." So they clearly believed that I was a rube, and... Which is fine, A-OK. However, when they did not want Mr. Denninghoff to look at it, knowing it was a joke, I realized they were not negotiating very fairly, to say the least. What this comes down to, there's many things. It's just 96 feet, or 74 yards, or just these numbers. It was absolutely ridiculous. The one sticking point, and we said this over and over and over and over again in an hour and a half, was we would like a binding inter-local agreement where, when capacity becomes an issue, and it will become an issue, and that there will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $150 to $250 million of additional resources, those resources will be the burden of the city, not the county. Palm Bay seems to believe that they'll sign that, but at any given time, they want the ability to back out, so that falls on the city. Oh, sorry, that falls on the county. Again, this was their idea, not ours. It is absolutely ridiculous. I completely understand. And then I got fired up when I turned on government television. You should never watch government television, but when I saw Palm Bay did their state of the city. First of all, they had a whole production number. You know, they had drones going everywhere, and they showed development and all this stuff. What they didn't mention was FBI investigations or state audits, which was really kind of interesting. But they had spent time, and in fact, the mayor went as far to thank the production company. You've got a multimillion-dollar project that is going to help your citizens move from point A to point B, and you spend time on a multimedia presentation instead of dealing with an issue that the county has been consistent on. "We're more than willing to work with you. We're more than willing to help out. However, the issues that come because of capacity, we don't have the resources. This was your idea. Take responsibility for these resources. And we don't wanna sign a contract that you have the ability to get out and leave the county's taxpayers on the hook for..." Again, again, Mr. Denninghoff mentioned that it could've gotten slightly better, so it may only be in the neighborhood of $200 million, but we don't have those resources. And I don't think any way, shape, or form that we can trust Palm Bay. Our one simple request, and this was Thursday, please provide us with some documentation that you plan to go to your board, asking to sign an inter-local agreement that is fair to both parties, that says that as capacity grows, the city will take responsibility. At the 11th hour, they turned in a document that says, "We'll talk with our attorney." It was absolute, utter, and total joke. I am extremely disappointed. I apologize to Mr. Denninghoff for wasting his time. He thought that... It was pretty funny. He believed that since they were talking with the commissioner, they would take it seriously, and they would be good on their word. Mr. Denninghoff is very rarely wrong. He was wrong in that case. They sent us a letter. It said absolutely nothing. Palm Bay is not acting in good faith. And I believe that... I think option A is that we reject without cause, or without... What is... Without a note?
Explanation.
Explanation. I think we've given the explanation. I don't know how many darn times we can say that this is a situation that you have made not one bad decision, not two bad decisions, but 15 bad decisions. You had developers say over and over, not only say, write documents that they will be responsible for paying some of this stuff that welch on it, and all of a sudden, now you want the county to be liable for this? It's absolutely ridiculous. It got even worse. In the letter, the first initial letter, they said Palm Bay would like to meet, but we're only gonna meet at Palm Bay, which is... To play these geographic home-field games is absolutely ridiculous. I reminded the mayor that when the state found 30-some findings of audit issues with the city's budget, that the state didn't come down to Palm Bay. They called the Palm Bay up to Tallahassee to deal with those issues, which the mayor, for some strange reason, didn't think it was worth his time to go up in the city-financed car that is only his, another finding of the audit. I think that probably have gone a little bit farther than what I would like to on this one. However, I believe Commissioner Nardi would've gone much, much further based on what has transpired recently. So... And I will say exactly what I said in the meeting, so everyone else is aware here. We have great leadership in the county, and leadership that is trying to be as fair as possible to taxpayers. There is no... Not one question that anyone that works with a county is looking out, not only for this board, because the reality of the situation, that $200 million plus would not fall on any of the five of us. It would fall on future commissioners and to assess that. And it would be very easy to punt that to them. We were still paying for a golf course that a commission previously had saddled us with. Thankfully, that was only $5 million. This is $200 million.
Right.
So I appreciate Mr. Denninghoff working so openly with those folks, but I don't know that there's anything else that we can say, other than, "Palm Bay, please get us an inter-local agreement that you take responsibility for any capacity issues as they come up with a contract that is not able to be severed by one of the two parties." That's all we're looking for. We've talked about it over and over and over again, and we can't even get a letter stating that they will bring that to the board. We don't even have... I don't know that their board has been even shared. It is absolutely... And I'm sorry I've gone on a little bit, but the reality of the situation is I had an hour and a half meeting where we expected to get something tangible from the city. We have not. And again, I apologize for wasting Mr. Denninghoff and my staff's time, because absolutely, utterly, and totally nothing came out of that. So I would encourage the board to continue on the path that we're more than willing to work with Palm Bay. However, we're not willing to cover the burden of what could amount to, again, more than $200 million. So I would go with option one. It says, "Decline to meet without explanation." I think we've done it. I think we could give them an explanation, but it would just waste more staff time writing stuff down. They're more than welcome to walk if they really cared about this. I think they would've had someone here to discuss it. But again, maybe they can't leave Palm Bay, 'cause only their... Whatever their charter, their whatever policies don't allow it. But anyway, so I'd like to make a motion for option one, decline to meet without explanation.
I'll second for discussion. Commissioner... Pardon me, Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with Commissioner Tobias. We still don't have any substantial progress. I think we need to continue the course until we have something substantial from the negotiations. You know, this isn't really an emotional thing. This is just good business. As a county, we need to practice good business. So this is an easy motion.
All right, and then if Commissioner Nardi, when she's back, has a different opinion, I'm happy to entertain a motion to reconsider, but I'm gonna go ahead and support this. So seeing no further discussion, no further lights here, we'll go ahead and vote on option one, which is to decline to meet without explanation. All in favor of declining to meet without explanation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes to decline to meet unanimously. All right, and then as to J5 and J6, Commissioner Tobias, I don't know if you're inclined to wait until Commissioner Nardi, until she returns. I'm happy to address it today, but I know there's been a request to ask that you consider tabling it. It's up to you.
I'm more than willing. I think this would still provide, should we get direction, staff ample time, so I'll table this till the next meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I don't know that we need a motion. I'm just not gonna take any action on it as to 5 and 6. And then, Mr. Abate, with respect to J1, J2, J5, and J6, can you just keep them on the next meeting? Just basically forward them through on Legisstar?
We'll do that.
Perfect. Thanks. And if we can just keep the order, I think that'll keep everyone happy, hopefully. All right, public comment. I do have a card from Daniel Williman, Satellite Beach. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Commissioner Loeb, you're undoubtedly aware of what I'm gonna discuss, but due to sunshine, you can't discuss it with everybody else.
Sure.
So I'd just like to bring this to the attention of the commission. There's been a situation in Bivard County which shocks the conscience. I'm glad, Mr. Tobias, you brought up Palm Bay, 'cause this does concern Palm Bay, and it's very important that Palm Bay voters, hopefully everybody watching at home today, pay attention to this. There's a campaign, CRISP 2020, for city council in Palm Bay, that has a federally convicted felon on the campaign as the press agent. Now, this guy's name is Jonathan Riches. You guys can Google him. I hope you do. I hope everyone watching at home Googles the name as well. I've confirmed with her campaign manager, Karen Colby, that this gentleman is the press agent for the CRISP 2020 campaign. And he was convicted of multimillion-dollar fraud and spent years in federal jail, in federal prison. While he was in prison, he filed over 2,600 frivolous lawsuits under assumed names. One of the things that he did after he was out of prison, that he was sent back to prison for, was he drove to Connecticut and impersonated the uncle of the Sandy Hook shooter. This gentleman is on a campaign for Palm Bay City Council. He also filed a lawsuit against Gabby Giffords under the name of the man who shot her. I made a video about this, and I put it up on my Facebook page. It's gotten thousands of views over the last week. And I've been the target of a pretty big smear campaign because of it. Now, this candidate for city council of Palm Bay also posted my family's information, my whole family's information, my mom and my sister's names, on this federal felon's page for him to do whatever he wants, and his buddies to do whatever they want. I don't know, maybe steal identities, whatever. She spoke at the last commission meeting about cyberstalking and doxing. Does this, you know, does this fit that description? That's a very big concern of mine. My family had nothing to do with this. This was all me. I exposed that. I'm the local political pundit and independent investigative journalist who turned this up, this gentleman in Bivard County. What's he doing here? I don't know what he's doing here. I would, like everyone, to look into, you know, how he got here, what he's doing here, why he's running a campaign, or why he's the press agent for a campaign for Palm Bay City Council. This is the kind of thing... Palm Bay's not gonna get any better with this. It's gonna get worse. Politics in Bivard as a whole is gonna get worse. Thank you.
Sir, just real briefly. First off, I didn't know that the topic you were gonna speak on, although it doesn't surprise me. It has something to do with Palm Bay, given the variety of issues that we see down there, unfortunately. I would just say, I don't know the context with respect to what information was or wasn't posted. You may, if you think that there's some credible threat, wanna report it either to Palm Bay Police or to Satellite Beach Police, if that's where you reside.
Satellite Beach Police and the Bivard County Sheriff's Department have been made aware, as well as I've sent word. I've got family friends who are in high places in DC, and I've sent word up to DC as well that this is going on. This gentleman is involving himself in politics, not just here in Bivard County, but elsewhere as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any further public comment cards, so we're gonna move right on to L Board Reports. Mr. Abate, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, I do. As a result of the continuing low-interest rate environment that's being experienced in the markets today, the county, we've found an additional opportunity to refund an existing local option fuel tax bond that was issued in 2014 for road construction projects. Our financial advisor estimates an overall savings of $821,000, or 3.87% of the refunded bond's principal amount. The annual savings is estimated at $140,000 through 2026, and we would be able to put those savings into the county's road program.
Great.
So I'm requesting the board's approval for the county's financial advisor to explore financing options related to this opportunity. And if desired savings can be achieved, we'll bring back financing documents to the commission for consideration.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second it. All in favor of Commissioner Pritchett's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Mr. Pritchett?
No report.
I actually don't have a report today. Mr. Tobias? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a resolution here, and first of all, I wanna be clear. I know I put a cap on resolutions, and this is a little unusual to have one in a board report. However, this will count against my 12.
We're keeping track now.
Yeah, absolutely, we are. We had a... This is a little more on a somber note. We had a commissioner who came before us pass away. We looked hard. We couldn't find any family in the area, so I didn't think we needed to do a plaque or one. But I would like to read it out, as he certainly served people of Bivard County. So it's a resolution on our late Mark Cook, former Bivard County Commissioner. Whereas the Honorable Mark Cook passed away on July... Oh, sorry, January 24, 2020, at the age of 66. And whereas Commissioner Mark Cook served the Bivard County Commission from 1994 to 1998 for District 4, and served the board, chair from November 95 until November 96. And whereas, not only did he serve as county commissioner, he worked as an assistant to a county commissioner for eight years. And whereas, he also served on multiple community boards, such as being a charter member of the Citizens Against Government Waste, Bivard County Republican Executive Committee, Melbourne Board of Realtors, National Rifle Association. And whereas Commissioner Cook served on the chairman of the Bivard County Growth Committee, served on the Bivard County Housing Authority, and the Bivard County Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors. And whereas Commissioner Cook enjoyed working as a substitute teacher in Bivard County, and went to school and earned a master's degree in social studies education from Nova Southeastern University in 2000. And whereas, he is greatly esteemed by the community and beloved by everyone he met, including friends, colleagues, and other elected officials. And his passing is a loss to all of Bivard County residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Honorable Commissioner Cook will always be fondly remembered and celebrated here in Bivard County, done ordered, adopted in regular session the 25th day of February 2020. So a motion to approve that, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second for Commissioner Smith. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 4-0.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, sir. And you know what? I won't even count that against your tally. That's fine. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, with regard to Commissioner Cook, another item that you could've mentioned was the fact that prior to myself, he's the only male commissioner elected to this post in the last 40-plus years.
Wow, interesting.
That's interesting.
Okay, and I have a couple of things. First, I need to seek board approval for myself to accompany the EDC to Washington DC for their trip. So how do I go about that?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have any sort of an idea in terms of what it runs? I'll second it if we have an idea.
Yeah, it's probably somewhere around $1,000.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Hang on a sec. I see a light here.
No, that was the previous one.
All right. Sorry to kinda jump mid-vote. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0. Enjoy.
And I have a PowerPoint.
Please.
You have a PowerPoint?
I have a PowerPoint.
Only if there's audio for the background.
I'm the audio. I don't have a band either. As your board member for the CFX Expressway Authority, we had our meeting last week, and I just thought it would be appropriate for me to bring the board up to speed on what's going on with them. Virgin trains, that's a big issue. You've probably noticed, if you've driven up and down US-1, they've already started clearing land for the additional tracks in our county. If you've driven along 528, you've seen for the last probably four or five months, they've done a tremendous amount of work out there. And in fact, they even have the terminal for virgin trains. That's already been completed at OIA. So it's just sitting there waiting for them to get their trains on the move from Miami up to there. Whether they'll succeed or not, I'm not gonna comment on that. Whether they'll succeed or not, I'm not going to comment on that. The economic impact and benefits for Central Florida Expressway Authority, they have a five-year work plan, and it includes an awful lot of things, but one of the things is the 4.6 billion dollars in total output for the building of roads. And just to give you an idea of how cash-rich this group is, I was, I was stunned in September when they took in $33 million in that month alone in tolls. To me, that was just absolutely incredible. But they topped themselves, because in December, they took in $48 million. So I don't know if this board is aware, but the reason that I petitioned CFX for Brevard County's inclusion when I was chair, was because I, I had no idea that they were that rich, but I knew they have a lot more money than us. And so they can, they now are responsible for the portion of 520 and 528 that crosses the Brevard County line, because until we were included, 520 and 528 were totally on our dime. So that was the, the information behind that. Now, one of the big things that they've got going on now is the intersection of 528 and 536. You'll know it better as the interchange when you're going west on 528 to go to the airport.
I think it's a couple miles from Florida Hospital.
Right. So on the left, that's what the interchange looks like today. After they spend, spend $106 million, it will look like that on the right, and it will greatly improve movement and traffic throughout that entire area. So that's some of the monies that CFX has and is using for our benefit. And there's an artist's rendering of what it will look like as well. So I just wanted to get, get that information to you guys, because they're doing lots of cool stuff over there, and they, like the TPO, they look at things five years out, 10 years out, 40 years out. So it's interesting to see the kind of growth that they've got planned for Central Florida. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, the canvassing board, they're in full swing now, and Rita participated Friday afternoon, I went Friday morning. They zeroed out all the machines for the public, and as of yesterday, they have had 17,000 ballots submitted, and of those 17,000, 30 were kicked out for various reasons. And just for your information, 13 of those 30 were empty. If you can believe that, people took the time to sign it, stamp it, and they didn't put their ballot inside. So the silly and crazy things that you see when you're working with the supervisor of elections, that's one of them. And then they had five people that moved, that we had to make a decision on, and then there were the balance, which was 12, they were the actual wrong party. They switched the party, but they voted the way they were before. So obviously, that took a decision on this SOE also. So that's my report, and that brings us up to date on all that good stuff.
All right, thank you, sir. And then Commissioner Isnardi is out sick. So unless there's any new business, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn it at 10:52. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all. And Jeff, can I catch you before you leave, too?
Thanks, sir.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.